Right, brilliant. I think we are live. Welcome everybody to the virtual town hall meeting with Richard Graham. So this is your opportunity as Gloucester students and members of the Gloucester constituency to ask your elected representative some questions. So for those of you who don't know me, I am Luke Brown. I am the Students' Union President this year and I was elected in back in February and I've been in the role for about four months now. But let's crack straight on with it. So just a couple of housekeeping rules. Please make sure that the questions you ask, hopefully you'll see a little on the bottom menu at the bottom of the Q and A button. If you press on that, you can submit a question there. And we do have someone moderating questions. So please, if you want your question to be asked, then please make sure that you are asking it in a constructive manner to make sure that Richard can do the best he can to answer the questions. So a couple of how, a couple more points as well. If you are needing creative captions as well, then there's a little button on the bottom and hopefully we'll be able to have subtitles up for anyone who... And just a reminder, I will do this at the end of the service as well. But please remember that there are plenty of mental health services available in Gloucestershire and at the university. So if you are feeling particularly down at the moment or you're finding it quite hard, then there are services available at the university for you to use. And just a reminder of those emails, it's helpzones@glosterac.uk and mhw@glosterac.uk. So let's quickly, I'll introduce Richard who is joining us. Hopefully Josh, we can get him live up and we'll unmute him. You might have to unmute yourself, Richard. And if you just want to do a little introduction to yourself.
Well, Luke, thanks so much, guys. It's great to almost be with you. I can't quite see or hear you all, but I can imagine that I'm there with you on the campus in Gloucester. And it's a great idea on the International Day of Students to catch up with all of you guys, hear your stories and issues and challenges and respond to those and any other questions as best I can. I'm running short in the tank on sleep. I had about two and a half hours sleep last night doing squillion things before this morning's environmental bill committee. So if I'm not quite the full shilling, forgive me.
That's all right. Thank you, Richard. Thank you very much for joining us as well. It's great to have you here. So let's go straight into the first question of one of our live speakers. So joining us at the moment is Dan. And Dan, if you just want to unmute yourself, give a bit of context to the question and then ask away.
Yeah, thanks, Luke, and thank you, Richard, for coming and speaking to us as well. So my name's Dan. I'm a first year student paramedic at the University of Gloucestershire. And my question is regarding returning to face-to-face tuition. Obviously with a course such as mine, it is a very practical course at times and there are certain elements where we do have to be in university regardless, such as for practising certain skills, cannulation, intubation, that sort of thing. I think one of our main concerns as a cohort is the blended learning approach that our university is currently taking and the lack of face-to-face tuition. Obviously, I appreciate there's a, within university sentence, there is a higher chance that some students, given the age range, the statistics show that it is likely that a lot of us could be asymptomatic and the government have to try and control the spread as much as possible. But we, as a cohort, we sometimes feel that the blended learning approach taken and the online lectures that we're having aren't as effective as face-to-face tuition would be and some citing it as a bit of a glorified streaming service. And at a time where both primary and secondary schools are still receiving the normal version of education, I was just wondering what central government's plans are for returning to face-to-face lectures in higher education, especially the more practical or hands-on based courses such as paramedic science?
Yeah, great question, Dan. I can totally get where you're coming from. I've got other friends who are still at university who tell me similar things. They'd love to get back to a proper university experience and face-to-face teaching and that chance to swap thoughts in a room with other students and teachers really important. In your case, I'm guessing also that you've got a practical element, which is probably in Gloucester Royal Hospital, is it?
We have, we just finished a placement block which, due to COVID, that has been cut down a lot. So we would, normally we'd be out on the ambulances two or three times a week following the same shifts as whoever our mentor is. But because of COVID, we've been doing one shift a week at a random station with a random mentor. So I mean, I think South West Ambulance Service has done the best they can in terms of our placements. And in the second year, we do go on to different placements in hospitals and things like that. But that's all we've had so far.
Yeah. So fun enough, I talked about this on the, we have a call every Friday, every, normally every other Friday now, which is between all the heads of the NHS in Gloucestershire, Public Health, County Council and the six MPs. And I chair these meetings. We actually had a brief discussion on this with the head of the Hospitals Trust the other day. And I think I'm right in saying, I don't think she'd mind me saying, although probably not, not for advertising, that she's trying to get the placement students into that first cohort of people from the NHS who will be mass tested using the new technology as soon as possible, precisely in order to try and make sure that you're getting the practical access and exposure that you need as part of the university course. And my sort of working assumption is that that would include all the trusts, wherever you've got placements, whether the ambulance, health and care, Hospitals Trust. So I think the sort of roundabout answer to your question is everything depends basically on what our scientific solutions are to COVID-19. I think the ability to mass test and get very quick results is really important. And obviously, if we can do that pretty well continuously with people who are on the frontline or close to it, that gives you all much more confidence in the system and enables the system to work. And we're going to need you all, to be honest, because it's going to be a difficult winter. The ultimate cavalry, the vaccine, is going to take a bit of time to approve, manufacture, distribute, roll out. We know the Pfizer vaccine is logistically complicated because it has to be kept at very low temperatures. The GPs will all be involved in this. And I think the hope is to try and get the most vulnerable and the oldest vaccinated before Christmas. And then some of the other vaccines, including the AstraZeneca one, where the sort of results from their own volunteers haven't yet been published but are expected to do so reasonably soon. All of that will have a transformational effect. So in a way, Dan, I'm sort of saying, I can't give you an absolute clear answer and I think you know that anyway. But what I can share with you is I know your own Vice Chancellor, Stephen Marston, who I'm in constant contact with, is very, very keen to try and make sure that you all get as good an experience as possible. There has been quite a lot of negative media, some of it from students, some of it from journalists. I think the uni Gloucestershire media team have done a little video recently, which I was looking at a bit earlier, which goes a little bit of the way to countering all the negative side, but it's different for, you know, different people on different courses. And no one's pretending this is the real experience that you all want. So he's keen, the university's keen, I'm keen, you know, we all want it to be great. But I just can't promise you exactly when it's going to be business as usual.
That's great. Thank you very much, Richard.
Brilliant. Thank you, Richard, and thank you, Dan, for that great question. Richard, we've had a comment from someone in the audience saying that they can't really hear you too well. I don't know if it's possible to get your microphone moved a bit closer or if you give that a go at speaking.
I think I've got a bit of technology here, Luke, which makes me look a bit like Biggles. You know, am I cleared for takeoff? Ground control to Major Tom. But I hope that that makes it easier for you to hear me. Sorry about that.
No, that's no problem at all. Thank you very much. Yes.
Dan was obviously a lip reader, was he?
Yes, it was actually easier to hear you. Thank you very much for that. So we did have a question from someone else who would be joining us live from Ewan. Unfortunately, we're having a few technical issues getting him in. So if it's okay, I will ask on his behalf. Let me just pull up the question there. So this is from Ewan. Can you guarantee that after lockdown is completed on the 2nd of December, that all sport will continue as before lockdown? And how are the government restrictions going to affect the resumption of national sporting leagues? So two questions in there for you, Richard. Thank you.
Yeah, no, both totally valid ones. I mean, I'm sort of tempted to say there aren't many guarantees in life apart from taxation and death, you know, the old cliche. I definitely can't give anybody a guarantee about anything, you know, happening tomorrow. But what I can share with you is that there's absolutely determination from the Prime Minister, the government, and I can promise you from all of us as MPs, that the national lockdown does end on the 2nd of December, so that on the 3rd, we revert back to a tiered system. And that's legally has to happen because the legislation is timed out then. So we will have to pass a new bill. What I can't guarantee is what the new tiers are going to look like. Will they be exactly the same as previously? Will all the same places be in the same tiers? I think that's unlikely because things have changed in different parts of the country. Will we go back to having a sort of Gloucestershire county tier? Or will it actually be difficult if our tier is different from, say, Wiltshire and Worcestershire? All of these issues that are slightly up in the air at the moment, we'll have to wait and see. And I think the reality, Luke, at the moment for your caller in Ewan, is that the stats show us that basically the spread of infection in Gloucestershire, the R rate, has come down a bit, but it's still above one. The numbers of people infected has obviously continued to increase quite sharply. The number of people with infections in the hospital has gone from 18 to 147 in the last two and a bit weeks. So that is an increase. We've got roughly 1,000 beds in the Hospitals Trust altogether. So that might sound okay and it's less than the 200 in the spring. But the reality of it is that capacity is around 96% in the hospital at the moment. So it's pretty close to being full. And what you don't want is a situation where doctors and nurses are having to make very difficult decisions about who gets the bed. Is it someone who needs a cancer operation or somebody who needs a ventilator, say, for COVID-19? So, you know, things are pretty tight at the moment and I think the government will be cautious of sort of letting rip after the 3rd of December in case that has an impact on the pandemic letting rip as well. But in terms of outdoor sport, yes, I would love to see all the different amateur and university football clubs, rugby clubs and all the rest of it playing as they were before lockdown too. I can't see any reason why after December the 3rd, people shouldn't be able to go and hit a golf ball and volleyball, all that stuff. But we'll just all have to be very cautious about how we do it, Luke. I think that's the challenge because often it's not so much the playing of the sport, it's the fact that people gather in the bar afterwards and then everybody is pretty close and the hugs and congratulations and so on. Social distancing can get lost. So I think the emphasis is on all of us to try and do our bit now. Let's try and get that rate down. I mean, I hope the peak of it in this second wave will be in about a week's time and thereafter the figures should start coming down if the trends and the medical expectations are fulfilled. And then we'll be in a really good place to let all sport go ahead as it was, particularly the outdoor sport after December the 3rd. And the second bit of the question, sorry, I'm not sure I've answered that bit.
No, that's okay. The second part of the question was surrounding, let me just grab it up again, surrounding government restrictions and the resumptions of national sporting leagues. Because obviously we have quite a few kind of elite level sporting members of our university. And I think for them, it's difficult to not be able to train and play.
Yeah. So the elite level stuff, of course, does continue behind the empty stands, you know, whether it's Gloucester City Football Club in the National League or Gloucester Rugby in the Premier League of that sport. But it's the ones, in a sense, the level below that, the amateur ones, which in Gloucester would be things like Tuffley Rovers, Tredworth Tigers and so on, Quagely Wanderers. You know, it's those ones who at the moment can't play. And, you know, from their point of view, they think, well, hang on, you know, if the elite sports, if Gloucester City Football Club can play, why can't we? And I understand that. And there are a lot of why can't we's and what about us out there? And I get them all. But I think the reality of it is if we're going to try and suppress it, we've got to try and suppress it as widely as possible. So let's hope that when we open up, it will be opened up as widely as possible for outdoor sport. I do think the indoor sport is going to be difficult for a while to come.
Okay. Thank you, Richard. Thank you for that. So we have a couple of questions coming in through the chat, which is really great. And I do have some that have been asked in advance as well. So let's start to rattle those off. Someone in the chat has said, in your opening statement, you agreed that university isn't quite the full experience. So this person is asking why you yourself aren't campaigning for refunds or reduced tuition fees?
So in a way, I think they're sort of slightly different questions, Luke, aren't they? Because the fact that something isn't the usual experience doesn't necessarily mean that universities haven't got broadly the same costs as they would do, I'm sorry, if we were, say, last year or in a quote "normal" unquote year. So that's one aspect of it. The second thing is, of course, that the maintenance grants are still the same as they were. But it is true that in terms of the value for money on the loans that everybody gets for their degrees, I think it's perfectly fair to say that the value isn't the same as the full experience. But once you get into the sort of game of trying to say, well, okay, so, you know, how much of the experience is missing and what sort of discount should we give to different people on different courses? And what's that going to mean for the funding of universities and the numbers of staff? And who's going to end up paying for that? I think it all becomes quite complicated. So if you like, my campaigning on all of this at the most fundamental level was earlier in the summer, when I was very, very solid on the fact that everyone going to schools, colleges and universities should be able to do so. Because if we'd done what some of the unions wanted us to do, which was basically to close it all down, then everybody's lives would have been not just on hold for possibly up to a year, but actually many people would inevitably have gone backwards without the prospect and the motivation of studying, getting the qualifications and the skills and then going on to the next stage. So it would have been like the whole country suddenly sort of losing a year of its most precious young cohort. And I think that that would have been absolutely, but to me, it's unacceptable. But you should tell the person who's asking the question, I still get plenty of emails every day saying, why aren't we closing down colleges and universities which are obvious sources of the pandemic? Which by the way, is not true. It's another great urban myth. And I'm strongly in favour of universities carrying on as far as possible, doing what you would otherwise be doing, but obviously being creative online and streaming and all the rest of it. And I think we just all have to be honest and recognise that's quite, you know, it's not quite as good as what it would be normally.
Yeah, that is understandable. I think something that a lot of students were asking in the questions coming in beforehand were around this kind of tuition fee reduction. One student has said, students have been encouraged to attend university with the impression of regular in-person learning, which has not been the case while paying the expensive living cost to sit in online learning while suffering with mental health. Is there anything you and the government can do to encourage universities? So you kind of answered that in your previous question. But I think the difficult thing that a lot of students have found is that expectation of what they were expecting when they went to university and perhaps not meeting that expectation.
Yeah, and I think, you know, that's perfectly fair. But look, I think one of the things we, you know, we all, you know, we know from our childhood, we know from our learning experiences and we learn in life afterwards that, you know, things do happen. Shit happens. And it's how we react to it that really defines us as people and as societies. And I find it very interesting, you know, the vast majority of my constituents have been amazingly long-suffering and resilient during this whole year of everybody's lives being made less fun in a whole range of different ways. You know, from very old people who can't see their family and who had to completely shelter themselves for a long time, to younger people not getting the fun at school and university. And then a lot of people working in between, you know, people might think it's quite good to be furloughed. You get 80% of the cash and you don't really have to do any work. But that's very bad for people's, actually for anyone. Nobody wants to sit around doing nothing. That's not a way of life. And you're not improving your knowledge or experience or anything. Physical and mental health can deteriorate. So everybody's had to adapt. And I think it will be the ones who are most able to accept a slight loss of control, the fact that it's not business as usual and hey, well, we just got to sort of deal with that, who will come through this best. But that doesn't mean just accepting anything that happens. You will want to hold your university to account to make sure that the online learning in every subject, every discipline is good quality. And, you know, you should feel able to challenge them respectfully, but to be able to challenge them, as I'm sure you do. And likewise on mental health support, because there are real issues. Even just self-isolating for a fortnight can be really, really difficult if you haven't got, you know, a bit of greenery to run around in, for example. So it's very important that there is a lot of support for students. And there's a lot of stuff that is available and should be available at your uni like any others. And I hope that you feel supported by the Uni of Glouce on mental health. But you should flag up, Luke, if you think that there is more that could be done.
Brilliant. Thank you. We'll come on to mental health as a separate topic in a little while. If I may just do a quick follow-up, I think something you've said about, you know, I completely agree that in life, you know, not everything goes the way it should be. That do you agree or do you think that the government and the Secretary of State for Universities, do you think that enough was done to warn students about the possibility that university wouldn't be the same rather than pushing them for a semi-normal year?
Well, I hope that nobody is pushing anyone into a university degree. I know there is still an expectation in some of our nation's schools that as a general rule, pupils and perhaps particularly the academically bright pupils, you know, will go on to university. It's a sort of a phase of life that some schools and many students sort of expect. But I think in today's world increasingly, the emphasis is on young people to make a positive decision and only to go if you really want to pursue a particular course with a particular goal in mind later on, even if it's not a specific job or career. Because there are all sorts of other options of which, you know, a very popular one in Gloucestershire, which I've strongly promoted, is the opportunities you can get through doing an apprenticeship where you're earning while you're learning. And quite often that leads on to a degree level apprenticeship in due course. And when you get up to the top of some of the big organisations, take EDF Energy's nuclear headquarters in Barmwood in Gloucester, for example, they're run by a mixture of those with degrees and those with higher apprenticeships. So there are other options. And I think it's really important that everybody who decided to pursue a degree at the Uni of Glouce, you know, did so with a clear aim and purpose in mind. Because that's what will keep you going during the online learning, is that thirst for knowledge, whatever your chosen subject is. And so it's really important that nobody felt sort of bullied into this by the government. Did the government explain that it wouldn't be quite business as usual? There's probably always more that could be done. Nobody will have known quite how long this pandemic was going to go on for. Everybody in Western Europe has been caught by surprise by the strength of the second wave. If you look at what's been happening in Sweden, Belgium, Netherlands, Italy, France and Spain, Germany too, you know, everyone has been surprised. I think everyone had hoped that during the summer, maybe we'd been able to see it off and that it would be more or less business as usual for you all. So in that sense, you know, maybe governments were slightly caught by surprise. There'll be some medical experts who'll say, I told you so. But you can't crystal ball gaze everything ahead.
Brilliant. Thank you, Richard. So if I could move now on to, we're having lots of questions come through. So thank you very much for everyone submitting. Obviously, we do only have 15 minutes left unfortunately. So any questions that we don't get around to answering today, hopefully, Richard, we'll be able to email it over to you. And if you're able to provide some answers to that, that would be great.
Yeah, of course. And if you want to extend a bit, Luke, that's fine.
Oh, brilliant. Yeah, that would be brilliant if we could carry on for a bit more. If I could go on to the next topic, which is around part-time work. We've had a question in the chat, so I'll just read it out for you. The majority of students, both undergraduate and postgraduate, rely on the employment to fund their time at university using this income for rent, groceries and basic amenities. I myself work two part-time jobs, this student works two part-time jobs and have only been furloughed from one during lockdown with the other not providing me any hours or income because it's a zero-hour contract. So with the new travel window to get students home for Christmas happening only a day after lockdown, students will have to take a further three to four weeks off to go home for the Christmas period. So their next paycheck will be, may not be until February. Why was there no support or even discussion for students who will lose significant income during this time and may face significant hardship?
That's really interesting. I guess probably the answer is sort of, is all about the flexibility point I was mentioning earlier. I was looking, for example, the other day at some of the Christmas jobs that are available, huge numbers of them in places like the Royal Mail, obviously supermarkets, companies like Lathwaite's, the wine distribution business in, just outside Gloucester in the Business Park. So there are, there are huge numbers of opportunities around the question.
Well, sorry, Richard, hang on. I think, I think you've been muted. I don't know if you're just able to unmute yourself.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I must have pressed some button wrong. I do apologise. And so I was just saying, you know, so I think there are some opportunities out there during the Christmas halls and so on. But it does depend a lot on individual circumstances, where they live, can they get to that place where the work is? Are they able to do it for a relatively short space of time? Or would they have to do it at a time when they want to be back at university? I mean, all those things have to be juggled. What we don't know also is what's going to be going on in the hospitality sector. But let's try and be optimistic and assume, which is a big assumption, that in Gloucestershire anyway, we stand a chance of going back to tier one, which would mean that pubs and clubs can still be open until 10:00 in the evening. And we know that pubs, restaurants, cafes and so on are great sources of part-time employment, especially during uni holidays. That's what I used to do when I was a student or my three children did not that long ago at uni. Lots of opportunities there. Not quite the same amount of hospitality stuff. It's true, you know, the weddings, the big parties and so on, waiter opportunities, they're not around to the same extent. But there are these other ones and, you know, I expect that people like Amazon and so on will have lots of part-time jobs too. So I mean, I think the answer is, it is very much a case of individual initiative, working out where you're going to be at Christmas, you know, presumably at home, wherever that is, which for a lot of students at the Uni of Gloucester may not be in Gloucestershire. So I don't think I can, you know, advise every part of the country on what to do. But certainly if you're here in Gloucester and so on, you know, I'm happy for anyone who's a constituent to be in touch if they need a bit of signposting to where the opportunities are. The 3rd of December to the 9th of December, I, what my understanding of it is that that's the student travel window and students be allowed to go home on the staggered departure dates set by the universities. Not absolutely sure what the Uni of Glouce's sort of departure dates are, but that you'll have completed the four-week lockdown too. And then there should be, we hope, this mass testing capacity, which will be available and help everyone feel more comfortable. They're not going to go home and infect, you know, aged granny and grandpa with COVID-19. I hope that partly answers the question.
Yeah, I think the student travel window at the moment, we are going to be requesting that students go home between that period. I think, yeah, the question and the difficulties is that a lot of people have part-time jobs only in Cheltenham or Gloucester. So going home for that may be difficult, especially if they've had to go home earlier.
I do, I do get that. But for the ones who live locally, then they shouldn't be too affected.
Brilliant. Thank you, Richard. I've had a few questions, one that's come in through the chat and one that was asked beforehand around extra support that the government is offering to universities and lecturers to help develop engaging online sessions. So I'll turn, read this question that's been submitted anonymously. Considering that most lectures are now continuing online as tuition fees payable to the university. Sorry, are the tuition fees payable to the university being reduced? But you've answered that question. And I think the, the interesting one is if not, where is the money being spent to support lecturers and students in this time? And we've had a question about the extra support the government are offering to help university lecturers with this delivery online.
Okay, I'm probably not an expert on this, Luke. I'm, I must be honest. I'm looking at a bit of paper in front of me that has got all sorts of links. For example, through the Office for Students on Supporting Student Mental Health in April this year. And then there's an Office for Students webpage called Supporting Student Mental Health, which has got signposts and you'll have your own local ones, I'm sure, in the Students' Union. And I think it is really important. I mean, I do think we're going to find a lot of mental health issues that haven't maybe been flagged up formally, but are lurking there just under the surface with students. With other people as well, quite a lot of other people. It's really difficult for, you know, I've got members of staff who've got you know, real issues during this difficult period. As for lecturers and so on, I, I probably know least about that because I've been thinking more about the students. There, there will be issues for lecturers. I have no doubt about that. I mean, I think the easy answer is to say the university should have or should be setting up structures and systems for those issues to be tackled within its own provision. But if anyone who's on the teaching staff, who's got a particular problem to raise, again, who's a constituent of mine, who may feel that maybe the university hasn't done enough in this field. And they're very welcome to, to get in touch with me and, and I will raise it with the uni.
I think just, just very quickly, I think the, the question was asking around the, the government support, what, what support is the government helping, supporting with universities to to help with kind of the online transition? And if there's been any financial support or any, any extra kind of just, yeah, support in, in that transition. I'm not sure if you know anything about that.
I don't think anything really specific. I mean, the sort of crude reality of, of how universities are funded is that it, they're funded through student fees which come to them. There's, there's a sort of mine the gap thing because students have got loans that they pay off gradually over a longer period of time. Some universities benefit from having foreign students who of course are paying more than British students. And it's up to the universities as to how they use their, their funds. Most creatively to, to generate really good student and learning experiences. Sometimes on facilities, we, one of your colleagues was talking about sport earlier. The sports provision at the Oxtails campus in Gloucester, of course, has changed out of all recognition over the last few years with a huge expansion of facilities. So some of the funds that universities deploy are on this sort of capital expenditure side. So they have to manage their own balance sheet on, on the extent of their borrowings. They have to look at how to provide a university accommodation like the Blackfriars accommodation that came online a couple of years ago. So it's really up to the uni how it, it balances the different challenges and requirements on online learning, mental health support, facilities and accommodation for the future. You know, it's a constant balance and I wouldn't want to try and second guess that. But basically, you know, the universities are getting the funds they need. And that should be reflected in the facilities and learning that you're getting.
Brilliant, thank you, Richard. If I could go now on to the kind of wider topic of mental health at university and within students. Obviously, I think since you've been elected in 2010, you're, you're, this is your 10th year of being a Member of Parliament for Gloucester. Congratulations. It'd be interesting to, to hear from you on, on how you think kind of the sector's changed with regard to mental health and kind of mental health support. And if I, if I can go first to that and say, how do you think it's changed? And you think universities and the government are doing enough to keep up with that change?
No, I think that's a really good question, Luke. Look, it's all changed immensely. You know, when I was at university 40 years ago, nobody was talking about mental health at all. I mean, clearly there were mental health problems and, you know, we were all capable of seeing those with the most obvious signs. But, but there were all sorts of other issues that, that weren't really tackled and there were even then suicides and all sorts of other ghastly results of, of problems, whether with drugs or mental health crises, pressures, stresses, family situations, bullying, you know, you name it, all the sort of major causes of mental health issues that are still here today. What I think's changed when my children started going to university and the eldest is now 29, the youngest 24, so not that long ago. Is much greater awareness at universities of their responsibility to students and mental health. Often for individuals who've never been away from home before, never lived apart from their, their families. In some cases in cities quite far away from home, so they didn't have any network at all of people they knew or places they knew and feeling very lonely and isolated. And those feelings can be even stronger during a lockdown where you haven't even got the opportunity to go out and physically meet like-minded people with like-minded hobbies because it ain't happening. So I think the recognition of mental health support in all education has changed out of all recognition. And the question really is therefore, is it enough? Should we be doing more? I spent quite a lot of time over the last couple of years advocating and encouraging what was the Mental Health Trust now part of the Health and Care Trust more widely. To look at providing specific mental health nurses for every school in the county. And they've achieved a lot of that. They've got individual support in some schools and they've got shared support in, in others. So somebody covering three or four schools and rotating. And I think we're going to have to see what the results show in terms of the volume of, of activity and help and the better outcomes. Surveys and things to pupils and students are going to be really important in this. And you'll have to tell me in a sense whether you think enough has been done at the uni of Gloss. And, and whether it's easily available, well signposted, friendly and, and quick to access when you need it. You know, I'd love to hear from you, Luke, and, and others, what your sense is.
Yeah, thank you. And I'd definitely like to take that forward, Richard, and, and maybe we can have a range of meeting in the future to, to talk about that. Just, I know I'm very conscious of time, so I want to fit in as many questions from students in as possible. And it'd be fantastic to continue that conversation.
Do, but you can, as far as I can say, look, you, let's keep going at least until half past one and then see where we are then.
Thank you. So just a, a follow up from that, we've had a, a student who's submitted who doesn't want to be named, but she said, although life is continuing as normal for universities, there are a larger strain on students being away from home, not being able to see friends or family and having no access to things like gyms or sports teams or societies. And so her question is, what are the government doing to support students at the University of Gloucestershire or in the wider H E community with their mental and physical health during this challenging lockdown?
Well, it's, it's a very good question. I think I've touched on some aspects of it. And of course, to some extent, I mean, we are the 17th of November now. You know, to some extent, I think we've got to focus on what will be there on the 3rd of December. Because otherwise we'll just focus on the difficulties of the current situation, which are very important and difficult both for your fellow student and for many others. But hopefully is going to be replaced by a very different situation on the 3rd of December, which will enable her, I think it was her, not him, which will, will enable her to see other people, particularly outdoors, get back into sports and and hobbies and societies and so on. And with restrictions, no doubt, but nonetheless much better than the current situation. So I think, you know, quite often the words, you know, what is the government doing? In a, in a way, the, the government doesn't always have a direct relationship on every one of these issues with all of us as individuals. If you think of it more as a policy-making machine with the details being run and managed and, and provided and distributed, if you like, by all the different intermediaries. So whether it's the university itself, the school, the councils, you know, whatever they are, they are the people with the, the direct responsibility. So quite a lot of the the impact of her question is really one for an individual university to address. Because they're, you know, you're all at different unis, they're all different animals. University of Gloucester has got these two relatively, in fact, more than two, but you know, the, the sort of main Gloucester and Cheltenham campuses and then within Cheltenham, different campuses within that. So the experience and, and the support may be different, you know, within one university. And I think it's difficult for me to say too much more unless there's an individual situation at which point it becomes, you know, some casework help, which I'm happy to provide.
Thank you, Richard. And I think a couple of points if I may pick up. I think that the, the mental health crisis, and I will call it a crisis because I do believe it, is that is a national issue. And I think that universities are dealing with it in their own right. But for, for a lot of universities, they just don't, they're, they're not able to deal with it in their own right. And I think that's where, I think a lot of students and the questions that I've been, been gathering are saying that, that there is help, they, people are kind of begging for help from above, from, from the, the national and the local councils and the government. Because this is a national issue. And I know that, I'm not sure if you can see the, the chat, but we've had quite a few questions around kind of eat out to help out and questions around spending money in one area rather than another area. And it'll be interesting to hear your thoughts on, on, and I, I do understand what you mean around kind of the, the multi-strand and the policymaker. But I think there, there are a lot of things that students are confused and concerned about that, that they don't feel that they're getting the, the direct impact of what policies the government are making.
Okay. There is a very useful one-page formatted sort of information page on my Facebook, which my colleague and researcher Dan will send to Luke afterwards that you can maybe share on the Students' Union Facebook, which has got a huge amount of information about different organisations who can give different help for different mental health situations. So whether it's the, the central provider of mental health, which is the NHS Health and Care Trust, whether it's the independent charity, the Independence Trust, whether it's G D A S. There are lots of different organisations to handle slightly specialist aspects of, of mental health issues. And, and of course, at the extreme end, if you like, there's the Samaritans for, for help when people are really, really depressed late at night and need to turn somebody to listen to them. And Dan will share that with you so you can distribute that with, with fellow students because part of this is about knowing what is out there. Before necessarily saying that, you know, there isn't, there isn't enough or where do I turn to? So I think, you know, the information, the factual information is a good starting point. I can't see the chat, so I don't know what other people are coming up with. But in terms of help out to eat out, look, you know, I think the single most important thing in all of this is the longer term economic and employment situation. And the point of eat out to help out was on the one hand, to give a huge boost to the sector that had been most hard hit by lockdown, which is the hospitality sector. And secondly, of course, the knock-on impact to that to employment for young people because the hospitality, the restaurants, cafes, pubs, as I was saying earlier, are the biggest single employer of students while they're learning the skills to go out and get specialist jobs in health and all the other sectors that you're studying in. So helping those businesses to stay alive and not go bankrupt while encouraging people to come out of their homes at a stage where the virus was pretty suppressed, I think was a very creative, innovative policy. It's been highlighted and and congratulated, if you like, by the IMF in terms of the economic value of it. Was it also an opportunity for the virus to spread without people knowing about it? It is possible. And I think it's one of the things that any future inquiry will have to look at, you know, what is the evidence of how people did catch the virus so that it suddenly took off again in September when universities, colleges and schools were all going back? We just don't have enough evidence or I, I haven't seen enough evidence and I sit on the Joint Committee for National Security Strategy, which has done an investigation into sort of biosecurity crises and how we handle them. But it's not a substitute for the inquiry that will happen later on. And we'll have to see if it turns out that it was helpful economically, but also unwittingly helped spread the virus at the end of August. And then clearly there's a learning lesson in that.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Richard. And I think that, that inquiry will be really, really helpful and, and no doubt the Eat Out to Help Out scheme did well for the economy. And but we do have a question here that, kind of last question to, to wrap it up really is it is about that balancing act and it, it's around the, the economy versus the spread of Covid. And I think kind of to summarise your thoughts maybe is two questions, one from this person in the chat around what, what does the government, do you think the government got the, the balance right between the economy and the spread of Covid? I know you said that we might need to be something in the future as an inquiry. And but from your own personal opinion. And then if I may, just quickly, if you, if you're able to, to touch on kind of the, the, the narrative that students were the people who were causing the spread of the virus and, and unfortunately, we were attacked a lot in the media for this. When we felt, and a lot of students felt that that was unfair because of this scheme, the Eat Out to Help Out scheme that they feel was the, the kind of the, the biggest spread of the virus at the time.
So there's really good questions, Luke, to, to sort of bring this towards a temporary end because I think it's great to have got this line going and, and you know, let's, let's carry on with it and do another one if people find it useful. If they all feed back to you that he was long, boring, pompous, hopeless and completely irrelevant, you know, then you, you'll, you'll know, you won't want to do it again. But to take the second one first, I think it is absolutely critical in this pandemic that nobody points the finger at any particular one group for responsibility, really of anything. Nobody wanted this bloody thing. Nobody is responsible for it. I know that Trump pointed his finger at China and Covid is the China disease, the China virus. And that may well be the case, you know, there's going to be an investigation by the W H O. But even if it did start in China, that, you know, you'd have to be the deepest cynic to assume that they wanted to export it around the world. It's not a great way of, of promoting your, your benign intentions to work with, with other nations. So I think we start from a position that no one is to blame. You know, until an inquiry and investigation has found out that somebody leaked something from a laboratory or from I don't know, the wet restaurant where people were eating animals they shouldn't have been and so on. So let's, let's assume that it was totally unintentional, no one's to blame. And then when it comes here to the UK, we still don't absolutely know how it came. We know there's some people who were skiing in northern Italy in March and that may have helped spread it. But we don't know enough about what's really happened to be sure. And I don't think that pointing the finger at students is remotely helpful. I, I haven't done it, I won't do it, I'll, I'll defend students. I think the important thing for any group, any family, any individual, anyone who's thinking of going for an eye test in Durham or whatever it is, is just try and work out, are you within the rules? Are you within the guidelines? And does it meet the sort of Daily Mail or Daily Mirror smell test? And unless you're confident on all of those things, you know, then the answer is don't do it. So, you know, let me take a practical example. My, my dad is 92. He can't really walk very much. He's pretty well blind. He lives at home on his own. He doesn't have an official carer or anything like that. If I want to go and see him, I can do, as long as it's outside and we're sitting far enough apart to be meeting the socially distancing guidelines. At this time of year, the weather isn't great for that. You know, he'd have to wrap up like Father Christmas or a snowman to be warm enough to sit outside, assuming it's not raining. So it's not ideal. And I can't take the risk of letting myself and all of you down by going along to see him and, and sitting close to him inside and so on. It's just not within the guidelines. So I'm going to have to wait basically. And that I think is the key message with all students and all individuals is just do your best to stick within the guideline. Um, and that, I think, is the key message with all students and all individuals is just do your best to stick within the guideline and then nobody can point the finger at you. That's the key thing. And meanwhile, the figures, by the way, for the Uni of Gloss are pretty low. I think there are twenty-one, uh, with COVID at the moment. And they're self-isolating and, and so on. So, you know, I, I, I genuinely, and it's the same for all Gloucester MPs, we're not pointing the finger at you, we're just encouraging you all to stick within the guidelines. I think there may have been a few problems around the Royal Agricultural University, but I don't know enough of the, about those to be absolutely sure. Um, so that's the, that's the, the easier bit. The second bit is, have we got the balance right between, um, if you like, protecting lives and protecting livelihoods? And that's where the big issue and the big debate is, I suspect, but you must tell me if I'm wrong, that the majority of students would probably say you've put too much emphasis on protecting lives at the cost of not protecting enough the livelihoods and that it's a generational thing. You know, you're slightly prejudiced in looking after the old, uh, against the interests of the young. I mean, that's, that's an argument that has been mooted. I've had a few constituents who've come on to me about that, most of them arguing that the younger generation are the losers. Um, some of them arguing actually that it's the older generation who are the losers because they're lonely and isolated and it hurts the most because they can't do anything else and so on. So my response to all of them has broadly been, again, let's not try and calculate what the relative loss is to a young person who's not getting a full university experience, to somebody who wants to work but has been furloughed or lost their job and is on universal credit, um, to an old person who's had to, um, live at home largely alone for, for most of the summer and then is back again unable basically to see people until early December. It's very hard to calculate the relative pain and suffering and the long-term impact of all of that. And for anyone in a family who's tempted to sort of say, you've done too much to look after the old, very few of us would actually want to see our grandparents die and, and agonising death on a ventilator, let alone on a, a trolley in a, on a hospital that was overwhelmed. You know, I don't think there's anybody out there who'd want to see that. So I, I think we have to say to ourselves that what we're going through is an extraordinary phenomenon, we haven't had it for a hundred years, and it's hit all of our neighbours in pretty well the same way. There were some people early on who said, no, the Swedish model is great, look, they haven't really had a proper lockdown, yeah, but they are now. And actually, they're really questioning whether their model has worked. They got four or five times the deaths of neighbours in Finland and Denmark, and their GDP has gone down by more than Denmark. So did the Swedish model prove an outstanding success? I'm not convinced. Um, then it, they say, well, but look at the UK, you know, you've had more deaths. Um, yes, we have had more deaths in absolute terms. Um, but if you do it on a relative basis per hundred thousand a population and so on, I think we're about sort of third or fourth at the moment and the figures fly around slightly and it depends a bit on how you report someone who died who basically had a heart attack but might have had a little bit of COVID at the end as well. So it's quite difficult, I think, to compare like for like. What is true undoubtedly is we had a very sharp drop in GDP immediately in the second quarter. And of course, it shot up in the third quarter. None of us in our lifetimes, I predict, I hope, I mean, I hope I'm right on this, uh, will see GDP going up fifteen percent in one quarter again. Likewise, we won't see it going down twenty percent in one quarter again, unless suddenly we have a world war with, with someone, God forbid. Um, so, you know, it has been absolutely extraordinary. But the thing now is, can the, can the recovery sustain itself? Clearly, November will have been a bad month because of lockdown too. And how we get out of this going forward, uh, next year is going to be the key thing. What we do know is that all of us in Western Europe will all have access to these, uh, different vaccines. And it's about how well we use them, distribute them, get people inoculated. Really important to have a high take-up. Do encourage students not to waste any time reading the anti-vaxers reports and, you know, hey, well, I don't need to have a vaccine, I'm young, I'm absolutely invincible. You know, I, I, I'm not going to be able to spread it and so on. I just think when it's available, you know, everybody should do it. It's a sort of national service thing. You can't make it compulsory in a democracy, we're not going to put anyone in jail or something. But, you know, why would you not want to be vaccinated? Uh, and, you know, the anti-vaxers, we had this on MMR twenty, twenty-five years ago. There'll be a lot of fake news out there. So in short, Luke, I think it's great to hear you and, uh, fellow students. Sorry, this is a rather long-winded answer. Uh, I think getting the balance right on protecting lives and protecting livelihoods is really difficult. Um, but I hope that with the arrival of mass testing and quick results and then the vaccines, we'll be able to move on to protecting livelihoods, um, secure in the knowledge that most people actually will be protected against the virus. And at that stage, I really hope you all get the experience you wanted to get at the Uni of Gloss.
Richard, thank you very much for your time. Uh, it's been great chatting with you and, and thank you for accepting, uh, a lot of the questions from students there. Um, any questions that didn't get answered today, we will shoot them over in an email to, uh, Richard and I'm sure we will have a chat very soon, Richard, to, to kind of continue this great conversation.
Brilliant chairing, Luke, so grateful.
No worries, Richard, thank you. Feel free to, um, uh, leave the call now and, and, and continue with your day and I'll just wrap this up here.
Thanks a lot. You can then slag me off comfortably in Friday. Okay, bye for now.
Thank you. Uh, brilliant. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Um, we hope you have found it useful. Um, and just a reminder out there that we are here as a Students' Union to support you in this time. Uh, we know that it's been a really tricky time for everyone, um, and we do want to be there to support you. Um, so please do get in touch if you have any questions or if you've got anything that you, uh, need to ask or want to ask or are confused about. Uh, our email is su@gloss.ac.uk. Uh, and a reminder that there are services available. If you come to the SU, we will point you in the right direction, uh, and that may be mental health services. Um, and so the email for that is mhw@glost.ac.uk. Uh, or you can contact your Help Zone, which is helpzones@glost.ac.uk. Thank you very much for joining. Uh, please do get in touch with myself or any of the other officers if you need anything at all. Um, and keep an eye out for the answers that are going to be published on the SU website when we get a reply from Richard. Uh, just a reminder, we are, um, meeting with Alex Chalk tomorrow, uh, and that is at ten AM. So if you would like to join to hear what Alex Chalk is saying, uh, then please do join then, um, and keep an eye out for the links. Thank you, everyone, uh, and have a good day. Take care.